We've had our five-minute break period. So we're gonna get started. First thing, I'd like to say thank you everyone for coming out. Thank you everybody for coming up and taking the time out of your busy schedule to come out to this town hall meeting. As I stated before, town hall meetings are here for you to ask questions, for you to talk about things that interest you about the village, about what's going on in the village. Hopefully to network and talk to your residents, your neighbors together, you know, you may find some things out. You network sometimes and one may have some information that you may be looking for. And then also to find out and not have a town limit on what's going on in the village. And that's what these are all about. Before we get started with the questions and asking you guys what it is that you, what questions you have, I just have a few comments and statements that I just wanted to put to rest. And by that, I just wanted to, not necessarily say go on the record, but just state so you can say, or someone can say, "Well, we heard," or "This is from, this is from me, so you heard it from me." Some things people were saying about this room here. I've had these meetings for almost two years. It'll be two years in May that I've had the town hall meetings, each and every, I think there's only one time that I canceled the town hall meetings in two years. And we started at the school and we ended up here because, to tell the truth, I mean, they did for us, the school district, but we, the tax body, and I'm a trustee of the village, and it would be more appropriate to have where, I'm a trustee rather than have the school be there. They were more than, well, they were more than happy to have us there, but I thought it was more appropriate to have it here in the village hall because this is where I'm an elected official. And I did acknowledge superintendent and told her, "I really appreciate it," but, and she was getting some heat about us having it there too, so we moved it and we put it here, and it's been here ever since. Now, I don't know what better word to say, but it's been, they tried to deter these meetings from happening, for whatever they can do, and I mean "they," I'm sorry, I won't say "they," I'll say "the mayor," because the mayor is the one that actually changed the locks on the doors to keep and not have this meeting. I was told that we should meet in the hallway, or we can meet wherever, but not in here. And I asked that question, why we cannot meet in here? And it was told to me that the rotunda is used for special meetings. Well, taxpayers pay for this rotunda, they pay for these lights, they pay for everything in this village hall. Why do we have to meet in the hallway? Plus, I don't have access to chairs in the senior center, so what, we gonna stand up in the hallway? So, I didn't feel that it was proper. I was told that I was using my authority as a trustee to bully my way in here. No, it wasn't. I was asking that we could have the meetings here, because I think this is an appropriate place. That's the first thing. Now, the doors are standing open. They changed the locks, but they left the doors open, so I appreciate that part, I just wanna go on record stating that I appreciate that, rather than for me to go and take other steps trying to get in here. So I appreciate that they did that. The second thing, I was accused of having political meetings, that I'm being for political. Most of the people that are here know that that's not true. However, if they have a complaint about the mayor, that's not a political, that's a complaint about the mayor, it's simple. If you have a person, they have complaints about the president, they have complaints about any elected official, no one got to be about 100%. There's always gonna be somebody that's gonna criticize. We can't take it to be in the wrong position, because no one is perfect. So therefore, you know, you have to take the good with the bad. There's nothing that, if you're a part of, that is always going to be good. There's always gonna be bad. There's always gonna be somebody saying that they don't like this. Okay, what you try to do, what I would try to do, as a human being, noted, try to change it. Because good criticism is exactly what it is, constructive criticism. You know, we don't have to talk about one another, and I don't condone us using foul language, calling people out, and something like that, no. I don't condone that. But constructive criticism is exactly what it is, constructive criticism. So with that said, I'm gonna move on. Also, I did ask to have the marquee message put up there for the town hall. I gave a setback in February, I'm sorry, back in Friday. And for some strange reason, it put the message for the school, for this community, which, since I've been trustee, has never been up on the marquee, but I think once or twice, and that was way, way back in 2007 or 2008. So, but we prevailed, and the meetings are gonna go on, because you, the people, the residents here, have questions, and we're gonna try our best to answer them. Before we go any further, I just wanted to acknowledge a person I haven't seen since, wow, it's been probably since Rickle, and that's Pastor Piss. Pastor Piss is right there. Just remember one, that's the number, he is. Pastor Piss is the pastor right across the street. The church is right across the street from Rickle. So he's the pastor, he's a community-oriented person. His congregation is made up of residents, and he has his gear to the ground. People ask him questions, and he knows what goes on here in the village. He doesn't come out a lot, because he does have Bible study, or man's against some kind of... But I really appreciate him being here, and, you know, maybe he can, he can see exactly what's going on, because he doesn't have a chance to, he has a full-time job, so he doesn't have a chance to come to the board meetings, and a lot of people are like that. They have full-time jobs and then they do other things. So they don't have a chance to come, so this is where they come to find out what's going on, ask questions, what's happening, and to learn, maybe get involved, or to give suggestions what we can and cannot do. I do have the annual financial report that we, that we talked about yesterday. I'm gonna kinda go over that towards the end. We did get the auditors' report, there was some recommendation there, but yes, we're still in the red. We still, we still have a lot of money that we still owe, but that's not, you know, that's all villages operate, I won't say that. A lot of villages operate red, I won't say all, because there are some villages that actually have lending institutions. You can actually borrow money from the village. Yes, there's some of them that do that. So, but they put money away over the years and were able to do that, so. So anyway, without further ado, I will start taking questions, comments, suggestions. We do have, I do have a mic so everybody can hear you, so who wants to be first?
Um, I have a question.
You have to get the mic, because you don't...
You can't hear me? What happened to U.S. Investigations? Are they still here? Do you know if they've ever paid anything to the village, and how much? Because despite the fact that there's questions, you know, well, they're not costing a lot to be here. They're using internet, unless they have their own. They're using electricity, they're using water. So, any idea what's going on with that?
Okay, to give a background, U.S. Investigations is a, they were here to do the concealed carry classes, that's what they originally came here for. And that's the business that they were in at the time. There are other businesses, but they came here and got the space here, so they could do concealed carry, and on Saturdays they had classes. But they would sign up people for concealed carry, that's the original idea for them to use that space. How much they pay each and every month? Zero. They would, we would get money if they sold or had classes or someone signed up an application. We would get part of that money from what they would, what they would do as far as signing people up. We did receive one check, and I'm not sure if it, because I'm not gonna speculate, but I do know we received one check in the very beginning, since when they first came in. I haven't seen them in about a month now. I used to see them, every time I come up here, every now and then, at least they would come up here twice a week. I haven't seen them in about a month. So whether or not they're in that room, we don't have keys to their room, we used to, because I used to be a trustee of this room, but we don't have keys to it, so I haven't seen them here. I don't know if they're still here. I haven't seen them move anything else, I would just speculate that they're still here. But as far as how much money we get from them, on a monthly basis, there is no monthly rate.
I have an add-on to that, plus I have some questions. So, they, when they came here and they were the bug people, they checked the village out, the village hall out for bugs that didn't exist, but I think they put some in. That's my own thought. I have a problem with the fact that lots of it changed more than once, in the not-too-far past. They could change more than once. Yet, this group had access to everything in this building 24/7. They are not villagers, they do not pay taxes here, they don't pay rent here, but we've got trustees that are begging for a key, so that they can get into this building like everybody else that was voted in. I have a major problem with that. We voted each of these trustees in, just like the mayor was voted in. He has a key, every trustee should have a key. No individual trustee, because he's not liked, or whatever the reasoning may be, should be denied the key. You've got people that are not trustees that have keys to get into this building, and I'm not gonna tell you who they are, but I know that they do. And I wouldn't say that if I didn't know. But I think if there's, every time we've asked about the U.S. Investigations, it's shut up with the carpet. Last night, the mayor said they don't have to answer questions. Well, that's just the kind of thing that creates this non-transparency, that creates the negative attitude of the people who ask a simple question and can't get a straight answer. If something's under litigation, or it's under investigation, or whatever they wanna call it, and they're not supposed to talk about it, we can understand that and accept it, but just to ignore us creates the negativity. And I think it's rather sad. It is my own personal feeling that the changes that came to Saw Village that are creating a lot of havoc did not occur until after the mayor lost his 501 trustee voting power. After that happened, everything changed. The committees now require a co-chair. Why? Why do you need a co-chair? He never had a co-chair. The trustees that he appointed that never had anything to do with the village were appointed by him. They didn't have to have a co-chair. Why all of a sudden do we have to have co-chair? Then there was a financial committee appointed, and instantly, we now have a financial committee appointed, and instantly checks were established without the vote of the board, whether emergency or not. We have voiced this over and over and over. Where's the accountability? Yes, you have to pay the payroll. Yes, you have to pay some things. We understand that, we accept that, but when you write a check for somebody like U.S. Investigations, or Joe Smocatelli, there was a meeting last week, you could've brought this up to the trustees that in it, next week, we, these are things that have to be paid. I need approval to pay them. But it's not done. It's done behind closed doors, it's done without the approval of the board. With the way things are going, and the money, and you can't get a straight answer, I would never, ever vote yes for an account payable, when stuff has already been paid, and the auditors that were at the meeting last night indicated, and I don't know how anybody else took it, I took it, that asking you, or the trustee, or whoever, to vote to say, "I'm gonna pass accounts payable," and some of that money's already been spent, is not right. It should not be on there. Therefore, how did this money get pushed around? We have a right to know that. We have a right to accountability. We have a right to transparency, and we're not getting it. As I see it, all the things that the mayor has bought previous mayor towers for is now being put into place. I think it's sad. There's non-transparency, spending on money without approval of the board, not asking questions of the residents for non-appearing reasons, and when somebody wants to speak out and it's not within the liking of the mayor and his group of people, then we are the bad people. Well, these same people that are calling us bad people and pointing fingers, were a part of what David is now doing. So how can you fight one person and say it's wrong to do this, but when somebody else gets in office, it's okay, let's go, let's do it? It's not right. It's not right at all, and answers, I don't care. Call me whatever you want. I really don't care. It's not right. Our answers are shut up with the carpet because he doesn't wanna answer them. Not because of legality, it's not because of anything else. He doesn't wanna answer our questions. And I have a major problem with that. I know that I get up there and I ask, a lot of times, people get upset and say, "She asks the same question every time." I do that for a reason. We have multiple people videotaping, and I'm asking the question, and if it ever ends up that we find the answer to that question, I could say I asked exactly how many times, because I could look at the videos. If you wouldn't answer my question, now I find that this is the answer, and I find you lied to us. Everybody has a cross to bear, everybody has to... When David ran for office, I said anybody that would run has to be sick, because they got a lot of cleanup to do. And it was bad. I'm not putting him down for that. What I'm putting him down for is totally disregarding what he ran for, what he said he was going to do. He was gonna hear the people, he was gonna work with the people. He's not working with us. The petition that he referred to last night, that had names crossed off of it, we had multiple people last, telling us they wanted to sign, but they didn't want him to have their name. We, this thing did not go on for a year. I don't know where he got that, I don't know where his people got that. I will tell you, as the head of the plan group, that was my idea, and I put it into place. I contacted the other group, I worked with the other group, the plan group did, we met, we worked, we did our homework. It was not, it isn't a year now. It will not be a year until this June that we started it. But that's neither here nor there. If I knew that that was being put in place, I would try to find out why. What is it? What can I do to change that? That was never done. If he knew it was out there, he knew who was doing it. Were we contacted? Were we asked? Was there any kind of meaning to say, "I understand everybody's upset, what's going on? What can I do to change these things? Let's go over some of the issues?" No. No, it was not. We put it off numerous times for numerous reasons, and then enough was enough, if that could be put out there. Too many things were happening, too many people were complaining that they couldn't get their answer. And when you start messing with our money, and not being able to answer us as to what's going on and why that is going on, then, then you have to pay the consequences. And then vote no confidence went into place. We're not done with it, we will continue. But I think the transparency, the changing of ordinances, the changing of things to his way of liking, the senior groups are all screwed up. The unification committee doesn't have a head. David had to have an administrator and a public safety officer, because he's not a full-time mayor, and yet he's taken on more and more and more. It is my own personal feeling that if he was able to get rid of Joan from Parks and Recreation, he'd have taken that over too, and probably named his friend Genna Bostes to come in as an outsider and, and cheer. I don't know. But things are not done the way they should be done, in my estimation. Things are being done the way they've never been done in this village before. And I've been here for over 50 years. So that's it.
Okay, so for anyone that'd like to know, there is no time limit on how long someone can talk, this is not a board meeting, so it's not a three-day time limit. These are the views of a private citizen, and I'm trying to go over some of these things that she's stating, and what those questions or answers. The keys in the locks for this rotunda were changed because of this meeting, because of this gathering. That's the only thing that could've been. And that's what it was, and that's basically, because I asked the mayor about it, and that's basically why the locks were changed, so we didn't go somewhere else on the meeting. As far as the co-chairs for the committees, yes, that's something new that started last year, right after the election. I guess he felt that he wanted to change things up, because ever since I've been a trustee, I was in charge of a committee, I didn't have a co-chair. And if we had anything that we wanted to bring before the board as a whole, we could do it at the board committee as a whole, like we had last night. That's what we would bring up, ideas, or, you know, state that we wanted to try to do this, or needed money for the village. But to have a co-chair, I don't understand something that he came up with. The immediate checks that you asked about, that's something that is more prevalent now than ever. I do know that back in the day, sometimes when we had emergencies, they would call and ask, "Can we pay this?" Because this is due, it was an emergency. But if it's an ongoing bill, that's not an emergency, because you know that bill comes every month, just like your rent, or your mortgage, or your phone bill, your light bill. We shouldn't have to write a check, an immediate check for that. We should budget that and have it done, taken care of, and not wait till the last minute. But, you know, that happened. And as far as accounts payable, I did ask the question yesterday to the auditors, that once an immediate check is written for an account, can it be put on accounts payable? Because accounts payable is exactly where it says, what it says, accounts payable, to be paid, not already been paid. That's not accounts payable, and they agreed with it. So Julia, I just wanted to try to clear some of those things. And as far as... As far as her own opinion, that's her opinion, that's the way she feels, basically this is what this is here for, to express yourself. Okay, Joe? Do you have the mic?
Bernice Brewer's first.
Oh, I didn't, I saw a wave of that. Do you have the mic?
I got, I got, I got a comment, yeah.
Who has the mic?
I do. Hold on a minute. I do. Bernice Brewer, on behalf of South Village citizen, Bernice Brewer, on behalf of South Village citizen for public awareness, okay? I came in late, but I did hear the inner duties comment relating to the no confidence petition. Now, we joined up with the plan group, this is a citizen group that we planned, that we put together, and we are putting out 35 issues that we're concerned about. Now, only comment I wanna make on that is that the mayor has made it perfectly clear that he's coming after us. We have made it perfectly clear to him that we're not gonna release the names of the people who signed the petition for their own safety, because we don't want any kind of retaliation or anything like that. So the residents can be assured that we're not gonna release that information. I feel that it's a big disservice to us when we come in and ask you guys questions, and we can't get any answers. This is really a waste of our time, and also, when we come to the board meetings, we're disrespected and can't get any answers about the money. So I wanna say the mayor can bring it on. I live in South Village, so I got the residents to back us up, so anytime you feel like you could go out and browbeat a resident about something they feel strongly about, I say, "Bring it on," because he gonna do it. But that's that comment. Second comment I wanna make is last night, the auditor came in and said, "In April 2015, we had $3.3 million in the water fund." It's 10 months later, we have less than $500,000. I would like to know what happened to the money, given the fact that we still have fire hydrants that's not working, water main breaks, infrastructure to repair, yet nobody knows where the money is, and nobody can actually tell us where the money is. It's really ridiculous that we had $3.3 million in the water fund in April 2015, and it's less than $500,000 now, and we don't have anything to show for. Where is the money? It's a little ridiculous. I would like analysis of what's been going on for the last year, so somebody can tell us what's going on with our money. We paid for this money and we can't get any answers, it's ridiculous. And the last thing I wanna talk about is that this, this issue of, last night at the meeting, it was a big thing about residents walking around to the police chief.
Now that it's running around.
Yeah, namely me. But my, my thought is that if the mayor could sit up and disrespect trustees and residents, I should be able to ask him to be removed, just like he has asked me a thousand times, that he's gonna rip up residents. So, I mean, we, I mean, tit for tat is a little, but we ought to act professionally toward each other, but if you only give what, you know, only take what's given. So, you know, whatever wrong we do is the wrong we do, but that's mine.
Okay, in regards to your question as far as what happened to the water fund money or whatever, as of April of 2015, there was 3.18, well, $3.3 million in the water sewer fund. Between then and now, or eight months or whatever, nine, 10 months, only thing I can think of, and I tried to do the math too, that we borrowed 1.2 from the water fund to their brother now, and then also... And then also, you have, um, obligations that you have to, you know, you pay your, uh... Public works gets a certain percentage of the water into a fund. Now, what happened to the rest of it? It's a good question. I asked that question yesterday and, uh, never did get that answer. But I did ask, "Can we, from now on, every time we transfer money out of the water fund?" I'm not saying that's illegal because really, it's not illegal. But we should have, it should be voted out by the board as a whole, not by consensus. You have meetings for other things. You borrow that kind of money. If you didn't have that money to borrow, you'd have to go to the bank and you would have to go before the board to borrow that money from the bank. We should treat it the same way. And also have a plan to pay that money back. You just don't keep borrowing because it's there. That money is there because we increased the water payments, $2. And that's why we have a balance. But that balance is not there just to use as you see fit and put it back as you see fit if you decide to put it back. Yes, we can, but we're glad to have it there to do that. We don't have to go to the bank and pay an interest, but we should pay our self-interest. This is the business. This village should be ran like a business, not as a payday bank or a credit card. I'll pay you at a, you know, bare minimum. So, yes, it should be noted. It should be documented that we took our X amount and we plan on paying it back when we get taxes or whatever. But not just have... I was shocked to find out we owe, or we had $1.2 million we borrowed from the water fund. That's a lot. Without any type of documentation. I do know that $300,000 was budgeted last year out of the budget that we would take $300,000 out and put it into the general fund for that $1.2 million and rising. And I haven't heard anything about how much we're going to put back. So that's something that I'm trying to find out. Hopefully, I will stay on top of that even though I'm not part of the finance committee anymore. I'm a trustee. And basically, if the money is not there, then we're at fault as trustees because we're the ones that are supposed to be monitoring the money. Thank you all for listening.
You didn't let me finish my comment.
Oh, I thought you were... I'm sorry.
But, uh, I mean, not only water fund, you have the CNN fund. We don't know where that's from. Well, it comes up.
The CNN, the CNN. The CNN fund.
Money, you know, but...
That's the noise mitigation fund.
I just want to say this in general. There are so many things going on with the finance. We're not understanding what's going on. We're paying the money, but yet, nobody's telling us, uh, I'm saying residents, what's going on with the money. You can't get a straight answer here. It's full of frustration. You come here every day. You want to know what's in the bank and you can't get a, uh, answer. So my question is to you, how can we go about getting some answers to some really questions that we need?
Be intonations?
Well, you know, I'm...
I'm just saying, be intonations. That's the only thing we can't do. You keep asking the same questions. Somebody will get tired and they have to answer. But you have to be, you have to keep asking. Because the noise mitigation, they borrowed money from that because we had nowhere else to borrow money to pay things that we had to pay. That's why that was taken. It should have been, hasn't been put back yet, no.
MFT funds.
Well, MFT, we don't borrow from that. That's the motor field tax. We use that for these streets. There's no borrowing for that. As a matter of fact, we need to add to that from wherever we can get money so we can only... Because right now, MFT does one block. How many blocks in Sauk Village? How long would it take for them to get to your street? If your street is, is, is repaired and we do one street a year? So it just blew the map. So that money should either be, uh, find a way to go out and get a grant or something to, to help out with the MFT. Because we won't be getting any CBPG grant money this year. The government, the government is not releasing any CBG, that's Community Development Block Grant. We won't be getting that. Right now, there's no balanced budget for the state development. He's cut out those type of programs. So we used to get that in conjunction with our MFT to help renovate, fix our streets. Now, what we get is motor field tax. And he just released that because that's been on hold for a while. Because as I stated before, there's no balanced budget. So we need to find ways to go out. That's what we should be doing. That's what the administration should be doing because the state is not... They're claiming they're not going to pay because they're in a dead lock because they have problems down there. So it is incumbent upon us. If you have a job, you have a family. And your job that you have is not enough for you to sustain your family. What do you do? You go out and get a second job. That's what we should be doing. Going out, finding ways to subsidize, not just wait for this money to come and just operate that way. Go out and get some money. There's grants out there. You have to apply for them. That's why you hire competent, professional people to know where to go and find the money. You get what you pay for. If you have a person that's there and they're working on a commission to bring you so much money in, just like selling your house. If the commission is high, he's going to sell that house. Well, the commission, just like everything else, it's going to be sold just like everything else. You have to have a incentive. That's how you do business. Who is next? Okay.
Okay, uh, yesterday, there was some wild, crazy allegations about, um, how trustees are being paid. And according to 65 I L C S 5, 3.1-50-5, it states that the salary or other compensation shall not be increased or diminished so as to take effect during the term of any office holder of an elected office. Now, what that means, salary ordinance for elected officials was passed. And it's required that this gets passed at least 108 days before new elected officers take over. Um, and the reason they do that is because they don't want, you know, someone coming into office automatically just raising their salary. Or if they lost an election, decreasing it for the next gap. So that's why the state law is very clear on this. Um, let's go forward to August 3rd of 2015. The village board voted on an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the administration in the Sauk Village Municipal Code. It established, for, to keep it really simple, the standing committees which the village has. One of the things that it does allow is the mayor to appoint a chairman. But it doesn't say the mayor has the right to appoint a co-chair in the ordinance that was approved. It also states in this ordinance under, I guess it'd be Section 2, Paragraph F, that subcommittees shall not be compensated and shall only be invited. Now, it's always been the case where the members of the trustees committees have not been paid. So it's really reiterating the same thing. What the mayor is alleging is that you can only be compensated if you're a village trustee for a standing committee, and that is not true. The salary ordinance that's passed in 2008 said that trustees get a payment of $125 for each meeting that they actually attend. And one additional meeting that they chair a committee. Doesn't say standing committee. Doesn't say anything like that. So for the mayor to make those kind of allegations in a public meeting, I think, is, is just, it's wrong. I mean, I think it's, it's completely wrong. And in fact, in November of 2008, uh, the same mayor, who was a trustee back then, wanted to make the position of mayor a full-time position. So, and he knew, he voted on the ordinance to approve it anyway. So it just, it doesn't make sense as to what he was trying to do yesterday. Now, in terms of the use of the village hall, let's go back to that. Um, in October of 2008, during the transition from the old village hall to the new village hall, the matters were brought up to the board as to what the use of this exact room should be. And, you know, that topic came up during this particular meeting. And it said, among other things, the Deer Creek Homeowners Association, Alliance Club, Fire Police Commission. Also, you know, basically, any of the committees of the village board that need to meet can meet in this room. So, I mean, there is established, you know, documentation that says that these are the permitted purposes of this room. And if this room, this rotunda, if this area where the public is to meet and hold free assembly, you know, that's one of our fundamental rights as Americans is our First Amendment. Our right to assembly, our right to free speech. You may not agree with what I have to say. I may not agree with what you have to say. But that's our right. And I think that anything that limits our free speech is wrong. And I think, you know, by the actions of, you know, the village board, you know, sandbagging this ordinance on the public comment, then it's wrong. I mean, the public has the right to address and criticize their elected officials if they so choose. So the public comment ordinance, three minutes, five minutes, that's, it's, it is what it is. But to limit what they can say, and then if they say something you disagree with or something that you find, you know, objectionable, you know, that is a limitation on your free speech and I think it's wrong. So that's all I have to say about those allegations. I'm sure I have more.
Okay, I just want to, uh, tell everybody, I just want to break this up as far as trustees pay. And this is my opinion, but all you have to do is look at it yourself. I think that this village is very fortunate to have, even though, yes, I did run with them and everything like that, but to have two other trustees that ran this last election and didn't run for the money. It wasn't about money. It was about dedication. And that's what they did. Yes, it's political now with the money. You try to find a way to not get... I could care less because I don't pay my mortgage, rent, light bill and everything with what I get paid here. This is basically pays for my gas. So, and, and then that's about it going around. But to do that, okay, fine. That's why I don't say much about, about it. Pastor, thanks a lot for coming out. And, um, it's not about how much we can get paid, how much we get compensated for. The two other trustees don't even talk about. They never said anything about, well, you know, we messed with... No, it's not about that. They ran, and you can call us political if you want. I really don't care. But they ran so they could better the village. Like I said, we were fortunate to have someone to do that, to better the village. Yes, they've been attacked ever since they did it in office. But they understand going in that that's the way a man, a trustee, a man, an elected official, you're going to get attacked. Did they get upset about it? I'm sure it hurt them a little bit or it kind of, you know, didn't take lightly to it. But they were retaliating. This is the direct retaliation when they tried, or when the mayor tried to augment the pay scheme. Like I stated before, I've never seen this since I've been a trustee since 2006. But that's the way it is. As far as the committees are concerned, all committees, that's what I'm saying. All committees are volunteer. We've had a trustee that actually fired somebody off that committee. I do find volunteer. But it has happened. So, but your village is only going to be, and I say this over and over again, only going to be as strong as your volunteer. Because a volunteer is not in it for the money. They're in it for the benefit of the whole or the benefit of the village. You can't put a price on that. Like the commercial says, there's prices. And to have someone on that committee and to have people to come out and be on the committee and ask questions and you, you, you push it aside. You don't answer. You talk, you just tell them to sit down with it. That's not how you do it. How hard is it to listen to somebody say something and they say, "Okay," and try, they try your best to answer? And if you don't, you say, "Okay," but at least you tried. But they have to sit down, have a escort back to their seat because they talked a little bit longer. But then, when they finish talking, you're going to talk for 20 minutes about what they said. Is that right? No. So we have to look both ways. That glass, you can see both sides. That's why they call transparency. But if you put a barrier up there, then I can say what I want and you can't, I close the door on you, but you got to listen to me because why? Because I have the last word and that's not right. We, as I stated before, should be worried about the situation that we're in when it comes to finances. We should be worried about how much money we don't have, how much we're in debt. How do we get out of that? How do we bring it to at least a way that we can borrow money to better this village? We can't borrow money. We can get it to a loan charter if you want to pay that kind of price. But we cannot go out to a reputable financial institution and borrow the money we need. Everybody needs money. So you should call all, every, all municipalities need money because they operate on a shoe streak. But, but they have their availability to borrow. We can't do that. So we have to complete each and every fund that we have until we get to the point that you have no more funds left out where you get the money. You have to have a plan. You have to have something that you can put in place to say, "You follow this." You have to have a blueprint. And until you can do that, you're going to have these problems. We ain't going, there's no money. We're losing residents each and every day. So therefore, your tax base is going down. Those are the things we should be talking about and trying to find out how we can do that. They're talking about you opening up two new businesses. That's just like saying, "I need windows in my house." For someone to go come out. Okay, if there's open windows, I do have to replace the windows. You have to. So that's not an asset. That's a necessity. So if I took one business that left and put the same type of business in here, I just replace the same thing. Impress me and go out there and get a business that's going to bring 35, 40 jobs, that's going to bring money into this village, that's going to help the taxpayers. Impress me and go out here and try to find ways that you want to get people to move into this village and buy these homes. There's programs out there that if you come in and fix the home up, it's yours. But you have to create that. You have to have somebody to sit down and create that particular, um, project ordinance, rule of regulation. Because we have a lot of abandoned homes. You know, we tear something down because they're irreplaceable. You know, we tear something down because they're irreplaceable, but others we can, we can have it, where if you, if you pay for it, the construction is yours. What's wrong with that? Those are the things that I want to say. Fifty-fifty program for your sidewalk. You have people that have sidewalks that are crumbling. Some of them are willing to pay fifty percent, if the village pays the other fifty percent. Stop those type of programs, impress me and do that, not worry about who locked the doors. Worry about who says what, that I'm being talked about. That's not, that's not what this is about. You guys are taxpayers, you're residents, you don't wanna come here and hear people whine and cry and put on a show. You wanna come and find out, what are you gonna do to lower my taxes to increase my property value in the neighborhood that I brought, in the village that I invested in? What you gonna do? That's what you ask your elected officials to do. Anything else? That's part of life. Who's that? Is it nobody else? Oh, that I did notice. Are you gonna be the guy walking around?
She's over here. Why you doing over there?
She's right here. Ms. Clark.
She's over there.
I know.
Jan Clark. I just want, I didn't wanna lean over and ask her, because I didn't think her answer would be beneficial to the rest of the people here, because I'm sure they wanna know, okay? Why didn't you say that, that people were apprehensive for the mayor to know who signed that, that there would be repercussions? Was there something done or said that concerns me?
Well, the way I understand it is that during the town hall meeting on Saturday, the mayor said that he was, he wanted to know the names of the six hundred and fifty-two people who signed the petition, because he wanted to talk to them directly. That sounds like intimidation to me. We, that's one reason why we blacked the names out, because we didn't want him to intimidate people. You know, they, they're, they have their ideas, they wanna stick to them, and they want anybody intimidated. And, I mean, he actually said this in Tuesday's house meeting, he wanted to talk to the people. So, I think that's not, yeah. Right, so I don't think that was a good idea for an elected official to go down and say, well, you signed that, and whatever, and stuff like that. And I also asked him, and Ms. Z asked him, if anything on the petition that he had questions about, that we will supply him supporting documents, because we get our information from them, and we can provide them with anything. Everything on there is true, we have supporting documents, yet the mayor sits up there and he'll call us lies. Now, how does that not seem a little strange to you? So, why would we give him names, so he could probably resonate through the village? So, that's why.
That's why it's another meeting, they want, I have the same answer. I have another question too, about that, the investigations that are, or were going on concerning the financial director, the treasurer. Is the FBI or whoever's doing this, multiple agencies, are they done? And is that about a month, about a month ago that they started, about the same time, maybe? I'm just pulling things out of the air here, that maybe US whoever uses the trustee room, is not there anymore?
Yes, investigations have nothing to do with the Grigam situation. They, no, they're not involved in that at all. FBI is, they still are, they're still compiling, I don't know if anybody here works for FBI, they take a long time, so therefore they're gonna cross all their Ts and Ds before they come out with anything. So, it's an ongoing investigation right now. We don't know anything, we don't know what's going, at least I don't know what's going on, only that it's still being investigated. But I do know the FBI have been here several times, but they got, I don't know, but I do know that it takes the FBI a little time, so when they come out, because they're gonna go all the way back to everything. It's just like, has anyone ever had their taxes off? Okay, they go back, they ask you questions that you didn't even know you put on your tab. And then when they ask, what about this, so they can find a way to get you to pay for it and justify it, yeah.
Is there a way to preempt a situation that may arise as to when they do complete their investigation, that the board of trustees is also made aware of the findings, rather than just the mayor and his advisor?
You're asking that when they completed their investigation, would the trustees be told? Only God knows if he's not talking. Because there's no way, I could tell, they can tell you, you're the mayor, they can tell you to tell your board, but will the FBI have a meeting with all the board, or would they? You'll find that out in court. You'll probably find out at the same time that they find out, when it goes to court. Now, if you're gonna be there when it happens in court, then you can find out. But I don't think they would come to the mayor and say, hey, this is what happened, because this is gonna go to court. There's gonna be a trial, you know, one way or the other. So, when they do those findings, it'll be, it'll be there. And while it's trying to be public, but believe me, somebody will know. They won't just come to the mayor and say, okay, this is what it is. Because they're trying, they're looking at every single thing. Anybody that had anything to do with his signature on there. So, they're looking at everything. So, who knows what they're gonna uncover? So, as far as what they tell the mayor, the mayor tells us, I don't even think it'll get to that point. I don't think they'll even get to that point. I just, I'm not trying to be rude, I just wanted this, anybody, anybody knew, happy to say, before we keep, you know, who has something to do?
It relates to the investigation. I want to know if they also investigate the board that ran it.
Can who investigate? Anybody that had anything to do with signing, or anything to do with the finance, I'm sorry, with the treasurer, they're gonna investigate. So, if my name happens to be on a check that was written to me, I'm sure they're gonna ask questions. You know, what is that check for, whatever, so, it's gonna, it's gonna go, it's gonna go pretty far, that's why it's gonna take a minute. If you notice, how long does it take for them to prosecute a village? Years, okay then. But when they did, they didn't have to go back. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call this to Juliet and Marisha.
I just wanna say, is that probably why the mayor looked up yesterday, because he had his head down, and when the auditor said, the mayor has signed checks, he kinda like.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm not speculating, but time was.
He lies.
I wanna bring something up that's been bothering me for a long time. You come to these meetings on Tuesday, and every now and then you see new people that you've never seen before, and then you never see them again. And it's been step over and over, that we need to bury our negativity and start being positive. And I thought about that for a long time. What can we do so that both sides could start being positive instead of negative? At just about the time I thought I had an answer to that question, something else popped up. And I'm gonna tell you about it, because it bothered me tremendously. I am an advocate of our police department. I always have been, I always will be. Are we perfect? Elmo. Do we have things that need to be addressed? Always. But we were doing a good job of that. When some of the people that keep complaining about the negativity from us, they had one of their inner group people write a letter, or one of her to write a letter, that would jeopardize the, at the time, the deputy chief. She didn't write that letter. Instead, she wrote a letter to the deputy chief, telling the deputy chief what they asked her to do, and the allegations against her. That was, this was an attempt to get her fired. I couldn't believe what I was reading, this was a nullified paper. This implicated multiple people, all the way from the top. And it bothered me tremendously that somebody could go that low to try to get rid of somebody, to ruin their lives. Becky could retire, she's got enough years in, she's just not old enough. She's done a good job for this village, she has supported this village, she knows this village. I don't care what your personal feelings are, look at the job status. And she's done a good job. And yet, this again, this went around like wildfire, and all of a sudden, it was buried. Why is it that some negativity is acceptable and some is not? You're not gonna get two sides to work together when you got one side burying negativity underneath the carpet, because it will show them to be what they are. I think everybody needs to keep their eyes and ears open. I think they need to continue to ask the questions that are not being answered. And I think that the mayor telling the trustees that they cannot answer our questions is wrong. We voted these people in, if I'm gonna ask them a question, he should be able to answer that question, especially if it's his committee. And I resent that, that Kevin Weller was told not to speak with us. We wanna know something about the water to grab, who better to talk to than Kevin Weller? And yet, he's told not to talk to us. Again, more negativity. Practice what you preach. You don't want the negativity that we're giving it. There is no working together at this point because of that kind of behavior. I listened to a trustee last night talk ninety miles an hour about what she didn't like, and all the things that happened to her. It was, you know, she went on and on and on and on and on and on and on about the same thing. Well, guess what? You ran for that office, you can't handle it, get out. She, she hands it out as well as she gets it. She doesn't like being called names, yet she acts like what she's called. And I refer to Boba that. How do you run for mayor, and advertise that you're running for mayor, but talk about what a fantastic, great job the mayor is doing? Well, if he's doing such a great job, why are you running?
Exactly.
Why are you running against it?
Okay, we're not gonna get to another one.
Okay, I'm sorry. But I have to point out some of her, you know, craziness. That's it.
Is there, okay, Allen has something. They have, our district, because, you know, I wanted, instead, you know, I understand that you guys come out, but I want people to, you know, everyone to have something to say. Yes, Allen.
I'm with you, sir. I was just wondering, you guys passed the ordinance about the business license being increased because of the Cook County Health Inspection, correct?
It was voted on, it was voted on three-three-one.
Okay.
Because, no, I didn't vote for that, because I did not believe, and I stated at the minute, I'm sorry, at the meeting, that we shouldn't be increasing any licenses at this point in time. It's not like we got businesses waiting for us to come in here and do business. You know, that little money that be increased for the businesses is not gonna make or break this village. You're gonna have twenty businesses out there, so if you increase the amount, what are you talking about, breaking that extra six, seven hundred dollars a year?
Okay, the only thing I was, Popeyes, okay? Our license was a hundred dollars, the past couple of years now it's at four hundred and sixty dollars. We don't understand the increase as to why.
Are you saying that it increased each and every year?
No, it was a hundred dollars, and then it went to four, three fifty, then it went to four sixty.
When did it go to three fifty, three forty?
Three fifty was the year before this. It went to three fifty, twenty fifteen license that expires in April, we paid four hundred and sixty dollars, four hundred and sixty dollars a year for that license.
That's pathetic.
When I first started, when I first started eight years ago, when I first started eight years ago, my license is only a hundred dollars, one hundred dollars, and I'm paying now four hundred and sixty dollars for a business license.
Okay, I'm gonna find out tomorrow. Why, because I do know this last time they did increase, I was against that, but I didn't have the votes.
We understand.
The increase was voted.
I didn't know it was from one hundred to one hundred?
It was one hundred dollars to three fifty, to four sixty. I can understand why businesses are going out of this town now.
Absolutely, I mean, I, that, okay, I, I should've known, I didn't know, didn't know that it went up like that. I would personally get back to you, because I'm gonna find out tomorrow why, and when did it go up to three fifty? I don't remember voting on that, I do remember this last one, but I don't remember the one before that, because I was against that. Like I said, this was three-three-one, I was against it, because, you know, all I wanted, all I wanted on that particular ordinance was to put the water in owner's name of the house. That's all we wanted, instead of having it into the residence. Whoever the landlord is, whoever owns that particular, that's all it was for. They added that. That wasn't part of our ordinance, that's why we voted it down, but we didn't have the votes. That's why it's important, when you put people in office, do your homework. But I will definitely find that out, I will get back.
Yeah, because you were saying something about the increase because of the health inspection. I haven't seen the bill pay.
That part is true.
Yes.
But you have an existing health inspection, we have to have the health department come out. It used to be seventy-five thousand, a hundred, yes, we passed, we passed that clause one. Because that's what they charge us, but not the business license. And I just want you guys to, I was gonna say this, but Allen talked, now how many people patronize or support Popeyes here? Okay, that's who they are, they're the ones that run it, they are one of our mainstay businesses here in the village. They work with us, I appreciate them coming out. But this is one of the reasons why I never like to go up or increase. A business license is there for a reason, and the money that you pay for that license is not gonna make or break anybody. You know, to increase that, what does that do? It's not like, what are we giving you, what did you give for that? So, I'm just saying. But, I mean, I know it's costly to have a business, and it costs money to do business, but for one hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars in one year? And I'm just wondering about what, you know, what the other businesses are doing. Even though you guys are a corporation, I mean, we're a small town, you're fighting to try to get, keep people coming in here. It's not like you're on a main thoroughfare, they have to come into the village to see you. So, therefore, your business demands and maintains our word of mouth. Uh-oh.
Wait a minute, wait.
Oh, okay.
So, while he was talking about licenses, I just noticed a door that says stickers are sixty dollars this year?
No, right now stickers are sixty dollars. If it's, if it's past due, which it is by this time.
It's set up July first. So, is that for this year? Are they going up to sixty?
That should've been July first of two thousand and fifteen.
I don't know, I just noticed that.
July first, two thousand and fifteen, though.
So, that's for my sure time.
We didn't raise the sticker price.
I'll tell them.
We didn't raise, I won't say it yet, we didn't raise the sticker price.
Okay. And then I just wanted to say again with this emergency chance, if I said last time?
Immediate.
Immediate, emergency, whatever, there's no such thing. And the auditor's kind of alluded to that yesterday.
Yes, it is, and that's why I asked.
So, you know what, there's something really fishy there, is what I'm saying.
Okay. She's a resident, she has the right. Yes, ma'am, but we gonna, we gonna get it to you, because I have to go home tonight.
I paid back for those taxes, thank you. I also wanna agree with the proprietor of Popeyes. When you're looking at the increases of their business license since twenty thirteen, is that, Mr.?
About twenty fifteen.
No, he said from three fifty, from one hundred to three fifty, and from three fifty to four sixty. So, that would go back to twenty thirteen, I would imagine?
I believe it was twenty twelve, twenty thirteen.
I believe it was twenty twelve, twenty thirteen.
Okay, may I ask that you. Look at all of the businesses to see what they're paying.
Oh, absolutely.
So, you know, to tell him that you'll have him and answer by tomorrow may not be right, because you wanna go and find out. How much has he led all of these businesses?
I wanna see the ordinance that stated that that went up, that, and it did, that, that's, and that'll, that'll let me know if they led everybody. I wanna see the ordinance that stated that it was an increase back in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. I wanna see that ordinance. And I wanna see, because the ordinance is supposed to spell out.
Yes.
So I wanna see the ordinance.
Which that was an increase?
This last one was only supposed to go a certain amount, how did you go from one hundred to three hundred?
Three fifty.
Okay, three fifty. How did you go from that? What, what, what made that, you know, so that's what I wanna find out.
And then when it increase, you wanna know what mind had that increase?
Or no, so they goes under, um, it's, it's, it's in your, it's in our, um. Um, budget, um, as far as revenue, it's in there for business licenses. It doesn't itemize each and every business, but it tells how much money we bring in for business licenses. So that, that, that part is in there.
And can you address that in two minutes?
What you gonna be?
Can you do it?
Yes, can I address one too then?
Ask the man that question.
That's not, that's not my agenda, so I can't address it just now.
The next two.
I'm gonna address it, um, yes, the next two. And I probably will address it with a company that's analogous for the trustees. I can do that. Yes.
Uh, my question refers back to Jan's question about the village treasure.
Try getting on the mic.
Is, is my understanding, my question refers back to Jan's question about the village treasure. Uh, is my understanding that you guys can't talk about litigation, which I understand. However, I think it's unfair to keep the taxpayers, uh, responsible for paying this man's salary. He's a part-time employee. He doesn't have a contract, but yet we are on the hook for paying his salary for next two or three years. I think that's not fair. That's the only comment I wanna make, and it's up to the mayor for him. There is no reason to keep him on board. There's, he said there's an Illinois state statute that they have to follow procedures and all this sort of stuff. I asked the mayor for a copy, nobody could give me a copy. I'd like to know what Illinois statute is he using to justify keeping this employee on board who's a self-confessed. Uh, felon. So, anyway, that's my question. Next, next thing I want to ask about is that according to the auditor yesterday. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was forgiven on the four point eight million dollar loan that Illinois EPA gave us. However, the mayor also said that the loan has been reduced down to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, uh, he said that he was gonna post that information on the website. I would still like to know where is he getting this information from? And I'd like to know, see the supporting documents. It is not on the website. In addition to that, I'd like to know what we gonna do to improve this infrastructure. It's not getting any better as we go along. Now, the last comment I'm gonna make is that. That we have so many problems here. We talking about financial issues, environment issue, racism, you know, um. People making up stuff, they go on, no transparency. But yet we sit up here disrespect, and yet we sit up here every Tuesday and try to get answers. And nobody wants to give us, give us any answer. I get tired of people paying, spending my money, and I don't know what's going on. I get tired of the disrespect, you know, so, you know, you, uh, I'm not talking about you personally. But, you know, something got to be up here. People are getting sick and tired of what's going on, and it's absolutely nothing. We are not moving in the right direction. We not moving anywhere. We not doing anything. We just holding off. We just holding on to get into that water fund money. Come on, we paying too much water fund that you guys can use for everything else that is intended to. We need somebody to help us out.
Okay, well, but it's as you know. We can go through all type of agencies, we can go to all type of people. You have the power to change their neighborhood years. So that's what you have to do.
You know, I'm out there.
So as far as the money is concerned, as far as the EPA. As far as the EPA loan is concerned, that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was given to us last year. So it didn't just happen. The rest of the money is waiting to come. When it happens, we'll, we'll know. I'm sure the reason why there's no paperwork is that that's came done shit. This was just told to us. And the figures that I, that I found that the mayor even quoted. Was we're supposed to get a seventy percent forgiveness grant, which would be three point three five four million dollars. That's a grant, that's a forgiveness grant. When that happens, it'll be inserted, but until that happens, we'll have to pay. And then after that's taken care of, then we will owe a balance of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. Which on that balance, we will pay approximately twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars per year versus a hundred and, what was it, a hundred and. Fifty-four thousand. So yes, if these days happen, but we have to wait, as I stated before. The state hasn't passed a budget yet.
So what's the plan for the infrastructure improvement?
As far as the infrastructure improvement? I, I can't, I can't tell you, because I, I don't know. I've asked the same question.
You're not privy to that information?
I think we should, you know, if we're gonna continue to have that money. And continue to keep the water rates where they are, and we get a forgiveness loan, and we get a grant. Then that money should be earmarked for certain things, not just put back into the water fund. Whereas we see fit, we can use it. At some point in time, we have to stop doing that. We can just operate on that, because we have, first of all, we have to have a plan, as I stated before, to pay that money back. That's the first thing. You just keep taking money out, and what happens when you delete that? Where do you go? To another, to another, um, source, sooner or later you go around sources, now we're gonna, money gonna be in trouble, now you gonna be to pay payroll. Yeah, industry trying to collect money on the, to pay payroll.
You don't think we in trouble now?
Yes, I said that. We don't have any money. We don't have any money. Don't let no one tell you any different. Yes, we in dire straits, but we're, all the other girls just in the same way. But you have to start with the taxes, and the first one's starting. Every year, we run to the same thing. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to plan for that. And quit spending it, and quit using it, and just hold it off until you do build up a surplus, as I stated before. What do you do? When you have your, your house, or you have your family, you don't make enough money. You might get a second job. Well, you gotta hire somebody to go out there and find some money for us. You pay, you get what you're paid for. Uh. Yes, sir. Did you get her the mic, please?
He got the mic.
Oh, he got it.
I got a question for you. I think I've known you.
Use the mic.
I think I've been knowing you longer than anybody here except the wife. And I got a question for you, because sometimes people look at you and think that Derek is. The type of person that hates and go on like, but I'm gonna ask you a question. Very important question. Tuesday night, when I stood up at the mic, and I said that I think the meeting should start at seven o'clock. And at nine o'clock, we should be out here. What did you say?
Good luck.
Huh?
Good luck.
That's not what you said.
What did I say?
You said that's a good idea.
No, I, I, no, I don't. You said you heard good. I said good luck.
Now, I don't.
Now, they say good, I said, your wife was sitting right there. I said good luck. Because it's not gonna happen.
Well.
I mean, because how can you stop someone that's in the middle of doing what they're talking or whatever to say, oh, shoot, let's go? You can't do that, so. I, it's a nice idea, that's in the, in, in a utopianism, in other words, you have a perfect world, that would be nice. But when you deal with people, and people have their opinions like tonight. We have, you know, if people have their opinions, it'll be nice. And I saw somebody looking at, because someone was talking past three minutes, there's no three-minute rule here. So when someone has to say something, that's what life is about. I waited for, or I'm just saying the resident, I waited for two weeks to get up and say something. Then I've been at home, sitting around, trying to bring these questions to the village, and ask these questions, and I wanna know. I get there at that podium, and sit there and start talking, and I can't formulate it in three minutes. And I go on a little bit, now I'm being escorted. You got to put in place that these people. Have waited for such a long time to ask this question, that these, because it takes a lot. You've been there, I've been there, everybody here has been there, for the very first time to walk up to that podium. Takes a lot to talk in front of other people. It takes a lot for them to express themselves, because that long time they apprehensive, they're nervous. They don't have the comfortability that I may have, or you may have, to ask these questions. They're trying to formulate, that takes a little time.
Well, my thing is this, is my, what, the statement I was trying to make to you, or to make to everybody here, we always hear the question, where's the money going? Where is this going? Where is that going? When you turn around and you look at it, any kind of way you wanna shake it or do anything up, when an attorney's sitting up there. If this meeting was over within an hour or two, I would go on, that saved money. But, you was talking about the budget and everything else. Is there anything in the budget? That you guys, we always wanna look at, is there anything in the budget that says, oh, any given night, that lawyer could stay here and cost seven hundred dollars? Now, that all you got to be paid, is that in the budget?
The lawyer, and there's a budget for professional services. Um, now I'm gonna say this, and it's just, it's the way I feel, because I've been doing this for a while. If your lawyer is at your meeting. That's why we don't have him at the committee meeting anymore, because we don't need him. If your lawyer's at your board meeting, and you see it going on and on and on. After the first hour. Because if I have a question for that lawyer, or if a resident stands up and has a question for that lawyer, if you notice in the. Board meetings that we have, the second and fourth Tuesday, questions and public comments at the beginning. That should be so, if the lawyer has a question, you can ask that question, or you have a question that may, the lawyer may have to answer, you can. And then once we get through with comments, we don't need him anymore. Because when we do need him, then there's tomorrow. Hey, we got a question at the board meeting, we'd like to get a clarification. But for him to sit there, that's the mayor's call. Bye. Thank you very much. You came out, you were here just in case, but after that, see you. Because they, I don't know if you seen the bills. But on board meeting night, they get an average of four to five hours. Each and every board meeting night, because they get paid to come. They get paid to go, so the minimum they're gonna get is four hours. That happens. So to cut that down, one hour, and we'll pay you one hour travel, because we have to pay travel, that's, that's business. So now I cut it down to two. I just did that.
Well, you know, that's what I'm saying. I mean, when we turn around and we look at it, it's not it with me. I, I, I look at things this way. For an example, I mean, we have three sources of income. That's our taxes. And we can get this thing from our I M L, where this thing is up here, the tip. And we pay for the, uh, your, uh, taxes. Those are the only three incomes we have, right?
No, we have enterprise, we have water.
I said water, that's your income, that's your water.
Water and sewer.
The taxes is twice.
Sewer is not part of it, you said.
Yes, it is.
You pay for your sewer yourself.
No, I mean, that's part of your income. We, 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 we make the same thing we make on water and sewer too. Water and sewer, if you look at your bill, it's two separate things. Also, but you're trying to categorize it as one thing, okay? Water and sewer, taxes.
And, and the, uh.
The tip is the administration.
Okay, fine, but that's just not the person ranking, so they still have to pay us that. But my thing to you is this. Other than those three things, where else are we gonna get money from? So when we take and stand here for six or seven hours. And still talking, going with him sitting up there and wasting time, that, to me, to me, it's just a waste of time. I mean, do their business. You don't need to be, to me, this is just me.
But Mr. Williams.
Here at seven o'clock, and you meet at ten, we stay till eleven o'clock, we don't get anything anymore done, that guy will do it again.
But Mr. Williams, you, you stating that, you know, where are we gonna get the money from?
Yeah.
Okay. You own, you have a business. The village is a business. You have to run it as a business, okay? You have a business. How do you enhance your business? You go out and get professionals that will come in and do advertisement, that will do whatever they have to do to try to make those people come into your business. The village has to do the same thing, but in the form of grants. If I would have told you, Mr. Williams, and I was gonna give you ten percent of every dollar you bring to me. You could bust your butt trying to bring a grant in here, that's a million dollars. Guess how much you get? One hundred thousand. So therefore, you're gonna work to make that happen. That's what we have to do as a business. You surround yourself with professionals that are gonna bring money back into this village. Because you're right, we only have a certain amount of income that we can generate from the people that we have here. So you cannot just say, well, you know, we're just gonna, this is all we're gonna get, because people, you don't see a lot of people moving into Saw Village. So therefore, our taxes are going down, as far as how much we're getting in. Plus, the praise value is going down. Your house of praise are a lot less, which means you pay less tax for that. So you have to circumvent that by going out and getting professionals to come in. And doing, and, 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 and you tell them what you want. If I'm coming to you and I say, I want you to make it rain, and you say you can do it, I wouldn't let you to make it happen.
I got another one. I would say. I would say that with all the trustees we got, maybe one or two of them brought a business into the village.
First of all.
I don't know.
No, I'm, I'm asking, did you grow a business?
Yeah.
I did, I brought a business in here. I was part of bringing the business in here.
Which one?
Win Pack. The original Win Pack. I was, I was involved in that. What's that name? I was on that, you don't remember that?
That was on the, uh, column up there.
That was on the who?
Collins.
Collins did not bring Win Pack. Collins brought in D P Partners. No, it's not.
Me, you were.
Win Pack is one, uh, Mr. Williams, Win Pack. I was part of that, because there was Lewis Towers, myself, and, um, Paisel. Ed Paisel. Were on the board that went and had these meetings.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
With Win Pack. At that time, if you remember, they had a, the, um. What do you call it, ran up in the, whatever, in a tent over there where D P Partners was at. Okay, I was on that board, went downtown to talk to them about that. So, I'm just, D P Partners was Mark Collins' drive. That part was brought in through. Basically, Ed Paisel. And then it overlapped into, uh, Mark Collins, because they needed to drive that to him. But Ed Paisel started it a long, long time. So that part, but as far as going out, bringing businesses in. How, you have a house. Do you present your house a certain way before you go out and bring people in to look at your house and sell it? Or do you leave it the same way it is, and they come in and look at it how it is?
I do that, if I'm gonna sell it, I will repair it.
Thank you. So that's what you have to do to this village. You cannot bring businesses in here the way it looks in here. It's just what happened. These guys here have been here for years, and we're glad to have them. Ask them now, what they come to Saw Village under the circumstances that they see now. Ask these businesses that now, that are here, what they come out here and do business here in Saw Village. Until we take care of our house, can't go out and ask somebody to do anything. Until we take care of what we have, you have to make your place presentable. So as far as anybody going out here, bringing businesses in. They come in because of work ethic, and businesses that you deal that are coming in here, they're flying by night, you see what happens. They come in, they go on here, they go on tomorrow. How much they come to we get off of? Very low. How much we making off of Dunkin' Donuts? Very low. The only one that's probably paying anything worth anything might be the oil brigs. And they're, and they're up, they can move at any time, because they don't own that building. They don't own their rent, their lease. So it's, it's very, it's a very fine line as far as who can go out and bring businesses in here. You don't want somebody to come, because once you divulge your location. To a business that never been out here before, you're opening yourself up for somebody else to come in here, that's right down the street, and they all present a book, and they say, come on down here. I got this for you, and you don't have to be in Saw Village, because they look at our statistics and find out what, what's happening to you. When was the last time you seen an influx of people? You know, when was the last time you seen an influx of people move into Saw Village?
Well, I mean, right now, the restaurant can get it opened up.
That's, I, I talked about that earlier. That's the same thing as saying my windows got busted out. And I need new windows. So I'm gonna replace the windows that I have with better windows, but they're still windows. They can replace this restaurant, but the restaurant that was there, but it's still a restaurant. It's still a restaurant. How is that going to have a great impact on the village? Yeah, he don't swear nobody, but definitely even, I can't even hire one person on the money I made off their restaurant. Now, you impress me and bring Kmart, Walmart, or Sears or somebody else out here, now you impress me, yes. Now, I open a job, I got revenue, I got other things that I can piggyback off of, because they have what they call coattails. They don't got coattails. So, I mean, it looks good, but it's not something that you can base your village income or anything on, you can't do that. It's another business that replaced the business that was there, just like I said about the windows. The windows you have to have. This business here, okay, he's gonna make some money, but he ran the other guy out. So for that, he ran the other guy out.
Well, I, I, like I say, I don't want to go over talking, but what I'm trying to say is that we can sit here on a plan.
I'm not pointing saying, I'm not pointing saying fact.
Well, it's like what I'm looking at is this, I mean, I'm just saying for an example, if a particular restaurant comes in here, if we don't support their restaurant, he can't stay here.
I just made your comment about Popeyes.
I'm not talking, you're just talking.
I just...
You're just talking.
Can anyone hear the speakers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, sir.
We shouldn't make a point of you, Paul, either.
Excuse me, sir.
So, um... That's what I'm saying, we don't...
Yes, we do, and yeah, you're right, we, that's it, you came in late, we talked about this at seven o'clock. That we should support our own. So, that's something that we talked about, is that correct?
Yes.
And we, and we, and we even asked, you know, we should support our own, take care of that first. And that's what, that's, that's how they survive. So we did talk about that.
I have a question for Alan.
Good turn.
Uh, I had an open board meeting, uh, a few weeks back. It was brought up that there was a confrontation between a trustee and your business. And it was said at that point that the mayor was going to talk with the two of you together, was that resolved?
No.
Why the surprise?
We have not heard anything from anybody.
Oh.
Wasn't that the same trustee, trustee, there was talking last night, saying how people were rude and stuff?
Now, that's another question I have for Alan, um... And, and, and as far as businesses go, uh, Mr. Burgess, uh, I'm gonna put you on the spot. All right, not all trustees can, can go out there and bring businesses in. But did you not attempt to bring a business in within the last few months, and you were turned down?
I attempted to bring a business in about three months ago. And I brought the business owner in to talk to the mayor. The mayor, um, told the guy that he would talk to him, and that he would get back with him. And, um, it didn't happen, so then I contacted the mayor again, and he said he was still waiting on the guy to call, the guy called. And, uh, the mayor basically told him that there was no license for what he wanted to do, and so this guy went somewhere else and opened up, he went to, basically, he went to Staver and opened up. And, uh, you know, that's what happened with that, and...
What did it business?
He was gonna have a, it was a, um, I cannot put it, is anyone familiar with Staver called Bamino's?
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
There was a, okay, it was gonna be something on that, on that scale, but there's one right down the street called, uh, I forgot the name, Party or, or something, but it was that type, it was that particular business. They opened up right down the street from Bamino's. And, um, it's basically, they, you don't, for you to do that, you have to have a beer and wine license. Not hard liquor, but beer and wine, because that's what they gave you once, go figure. But, um, and then he had five machines, they were gonna break in. Basically, it went north, I mean, with a hometown gear, where they have five machines, but they serve food and everything, plus they have beer and wine. So basically, that's what he wanted to bring, and that's all they, they wanted to come in at the time, and then, I think, I'll put it this way, we made, they made pretty good money, we did a certain percentage. Now, when we had all three at one time, we got a few gray from that every two months. Now, it's just one, I don't know whether hometown gear was breaking, or giving to the village, but it's a certain percentage. So, and they, they had a place that they wanted to open it up at, had everything, just had to get the beer and wine license from the village. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, if it's something that's tainted, it is fine, everything else, we don't, because I don't let trustees, go ahead.
I'm not a voting member of the board, I didn't think we had any commitment, any...
No, no, I, I just don't want it to be something that's...
I thought this was open cabinet.
It is open.
I'm not voting member of the board, so the trustees, I'm not held by the same standards as the trustees. But, um, just having come in late, just picked up on a few things that we just said. Um, number one, the reason why the mayor couldn't handle within Popeyes is because the mayor could not control the trustees. He made that clear at several board meetings, that is turned over to the vets. So, that has been turned over to some higher power than the mayor, because the mayor can't do anything about that, number one. Uh, number two, this public cabinet has been going on for several months. Um, I did a little research with some other municipalities, and I found out that the majority of our nearby municipalities have a three-minute time limit. And some don't have a time limit at all, and a couple even went to five minutes. But the thing is, I think what's most important is how you approach the podium, how you speak to each other, how the board members speak to each other, how the residents speak to the board members, how the board members speak to the residents. If there's, I don't think there's ever a reason to have anybody escorted from the podium. I think public cabinet is important. I know for a fact, and I know this has been all over everywhere, when I went to the last school board meeting, and I asked for, before I even started speaking, I asked for an exception to go beyond three minutes, and I was told no. After my three minutes were up, I asked to go another minute, and I was told no. Okay, so, it's not just this board, this is the way that we're gonna get our, our, what we have to say out in three minutes. Sometimes it does take longer, and I think if the board were agreeable to, if it's being stated the right way, then I think somebody would let them go beyond three minutes. I hope the public cabinet ordinance will get passed next week. And also, I'm very concerned because I understand that we have issues with money.
There is?
With money. I understand that, we all understand that, we're broke, okay? I understand that it's a big bonnet contention of how much money we're borrowing from the water fund, or how much money we borrow from the C N fund. As I sit there and listen to these meetings going on and on and on, and how I hear about how we're, we're stealing money, we're borrowing money, I wanna know what the alternatives are. We've got a budget coming up, and the mayor and the trustees are all going to have to put it. My question is, if we don't borrow money from the water fund? And we don't borrow money from the C N fund, it just went out. And we don't borrow money from the C N fund, what are the trustees and the mayor going to do for alternatives? Planning for the future, as you said, is fine, but if you can't pay your day-to-day bills, how can you put money aside? I'm really concerned about this next budget. I'm really concerned as a person who signs checks for the village, this immediate check problem for heaven, and this problem coming up with, uh, we don't have money, we have to borrow, and some of the trustees are totally against borrowing money. My question is, what is the alternative? I haven't heard alternatives. Today, we had to make payroll, okay? And in order to do that, we had to borrow money. Either we borrow money or we don't pay our employees. What is the alternative?
Okay, um, as you stated, that, I'm sorry, you were a little late, and I got twenty-some people. Did I, did I not talk about what, what happened, and what we could do about, um, not borrowing the money, or what we should do once we do borrow the money? Did we talk about that tonight? Okay.
Maybe you and I can talk at another level.
We, we, we talked about, and I'm just gonna try to give a quick summary, because we talked about this already. But there is not a, it's not a matter of alternative. The fact remains that we keep borrowing money, what's the plan to pay it back? We have, you can only take so much money out of whatever account you take. Sooner or later, you're gonna deplete that account, if you don't put money back in there.
But if you don't borrow the money, payroll doesn't get made.
My question is...
Where are you gonna put the money?
My question is, that when you get your money, and we're about to, we, we get X amount of money, the reason why that money is in the water fund is because people are paying two dollars extra, I'm not, sorry, extra. They're paying two dollars to pay back a loan that we're not paying back right now, so that money's sitting there. So, wow, I get to see that when I get to use it. When are we gonna pay that money back? When are we gonna start paying that back, so we can have something down the line to borrow from? The reason why we borrow from C N is because we depleted the water fund. And the reason why, and, and the reason for that is because we're not putting anything back in. I've had plans, I've, and the budget, I've had alternatives. But what we should do as far as how we should do our expenditures, and how we should do our budget. And every time it was voted down, this last time it was voted down, and they decided that they wanted to do it, and it was voted, the last budget was voted down, I'm sorry, the last budget was voted three-three-one. Because I felt that we were going in a wrong direction. I felt that we were getting to this point at this particular time, guess what, we're there. I had alternatives, I presented it to the board and to the mayor. The mayor spent the whole three hours, going up and down everything that I presented to him, and stated that this is wrong, that's wrong, what we, I hear. So as far as what alternatives and what did I learn, I brought something for the last two budgets. I brought a packet. I brought showing each and everything what we should do and how we should do it. I brought it for the last, every time it was, we're not gonna do that, we can't do that. So, am I tired of doing that? Yes. This next budget that comes, we'll look at it, but if he has the votes to make it happen, it's gonna happen the way he wants it to happen.
Well, I, I don't have that in front of you, Trusty Burgess, but I know a lot of it was, you said what we should do, and we should plan for the future, and what I'm saying is, if I have to pay a fifty thousand dollar payroll today, and I don't have fifty thousand dollars to pay it with, where do I get fifty thousand dollars from if I don't borrow it from a fund?
Okay.
We have to make payroll, we have to make...
Absolutely.
We have to pay the gas bill, but where do we get the money budget from?
Those bills, you have a budget at home. Everybody does. Everybody has a family, has a, we talked about this tonight too.
Yeah.
Everybody has a budget at home. You know that every month, your mortgage is due, your life, your gas, your water, and your living expenses are due each and every month. You take a simple pencil, and you add up to what your insurance payments are, what your day-to-day expenses are, and you look at that, add that up versus how much money you got coming in. If there's a deficit, there's only two things you can do. Cut back on what you're doing to get another job.
Exactly.
With the village, it's not that easy to get another job. So what you have to do is either you have to cut expenses, or you go out there and hire somebody to go get you some money. You get what you pay for. If you have, everybody, I don't know if I want to say everybody, but most people know what headhunters used to do back in the day. You would pay them to find you a job, and they would get a certain percentage. And the more you give them, the better job you can find, who qualifies. That's what they do, that's what professionals do, that's what you have to run your village off professionalism. You go and you get a person, you get what you pay for, you get a person to go out there, hunt for you, find that money. Believe me, if the factory is high enough to find it, they will find that money for you. Now, right now, money may be tight, but it's not impossible. There's money in places, we just may not know where to look, that's why you hire a professional. But in the meantime, you know your bills will come due. Then therefore, you don't go out there and change locks, you don't go out there and spend money on things that you don't have money for.
There you go.
To go here, and you know that at the end of the month, you don't have any tax money coming in. You hoping that you got something coming in, but you can't run a village on hope. You have to run it off what you have in your hand.
Exactly.
And then in the meantime, once we get flush, once we have that money that comes in, pay that money back to who you borrowed it from. If you borrowed it from C N, pay it back. What's wrong? If you borrowed it from C N, you pay it back, if you borrowed it from the water fund, pay it back, have a plan to pay it back. So when you don't have that money again, you borrow again.
Then that's what they do, Trusty Burgess.
I have not seen, I have, then why are we one point two million dollars? Why are we owe one point two million dollars to the water fund if they're paying it back?
Well, I, I guess you mean, I just wanted to have my...
I'm just saying, so therefore, until you can show me...
We would all love to have more money than...
Yes, we would, but in the meantime, you still have bills that come, every, but they're not gonna stop, taxes and death. That's, that's inevitable. You're gonna pay taxes as long as you're here, and you're gonna die sooner or later. So, those are the two things that are gonna happen, and I could say another one, but then that'd be saying everybody's saying I'm racial, so I'm not gonna say that now.
Looking over the thought of, you know, to say that the village is broke is an absolute lie. The village has over six million dollars coming into it.
I agree with you.
Into the general fund. Over six million dollars, they're spending over six million.
Okay, so then they're broke.
Well...
I mean, if you, if you got ten million coming in, you got eleven million going out, what you...
The problem is cash management is very poor.
I say that. I say that, but, but, but we are broke.
When, when, when the money comes in, the money goes out, but you don't run, but you don't... But really, the problem is this like that.
But you're taking money out of funds that are not designated for that reason.
Exactly.
Okay, so if you're, if you're, your fund is supposed to support your day-to-day expenses, it should be that you have your own fund, and then you subsidizing with the water, suppose we didn't have a water fund? Suppose we didn't have, suppose we didn't have a water fund, where we had X amount of money, what you gonna do then? Roll the door?
I think that's a good idea, pretend you don't have a water fund.
But I'm just saying, what you gonna do? So, 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 it's just like, you, you, you're going for so much of your credit card. Sooner or later, that credit card, it'll max out now, where you gonna go?
Peter's broke, so...
I'm not gonna say, but where you gonna go? So, so you have to operate within your budget, and you have to operate within your means.
That, that's my point, that, that doesn't have to be the...
And if you don't, I got something for you, if you don't have the money, you go out and get some.
But, but the thing is, is, is that to say that the village is broke is not a true statement. When there is over six million dollars coming into the general fund, what the problem is, is cash management.
But, but, but right now, cash management is cash management, but we are broke, we don't have, if we weren't broke, Bobby Barbour.
Okay, mismanaged too much?
No, it's not a matter, okay, that could be one thing, but you have to look at it. You have to look at, you have, you have to...
That's nasty people.
You have to operate within what you have, as I said before. You're gonna take, I'm not gonna, you need this bill when you guys...
I'm just gonna kinda say what Joe said.
Yeah.
You need somebody that knows about finances and knows what they're doing. Um, if they're running their household like that, hmm, where are they going? Because I know that if I have fifty dollars and my gas bill is due, and my child needs shoes, I'm gonna have to decide. And maybe I can do, you know, fifty here, fifty there, or whatever, but, or, my next check is coming, I can pay this bill and then get my check.
I wish I had a water fund or, uh, emergency fund.
Thank you.
That, if I spend all my money, I can go and say, okay.
Exactly.
My water fund, or my, if I have a friend, like, I'm trying to look at everybody, uh, uh, that had jobs or whatever, but people borrow money at your job. Can you loan me X amount of money for this, for that? Because people run into, they run into emergencies.
I'm not...
You're not gonna pay it back, because you're gonna wanna ask them for it again. So everybody has emergencies, I'm not saying that we don't, but it's how you do it.
Exactly.
You don't go, and you borrow money from somebody, and you say, I'll pay you, I'll pay you next week, next week, come, you got another store.
What is the definition of crazy?
You don't definition of crazy, do the same thing over and over, it's like a...
It's, it's not crazy, it wasn't, you do the same thing over and over again.
Only thing I stated, and this is what I hold true, is we have to find alternative ways to get money.
Stop doing this crazy, right?
Well, I mean, you doing what you're doing to make, you have payroll. I'm not gonna augment payroll, I'm never gonna vote against that. If we have to go out there and stop whatever, I believe in making sure that you work for the village, that you get paid, always have a job. I don't want you to get to a point where, we don't have money this month, so this week, so I can't pay you.
I agree.
I don't ever want that to happen. If we have to beg, or steal, or get crackhead prices... If we have to beg, ask, steal, or get crackhead prices, I wanna pay payroll because those people, go to jail, go to work.
Right, you need somebody that knows about finances or whatever, but you can't keep doing that.
Is it okay to borrow money to make payroll today?
I didn't even know that happened.
Yeah, there was an email that.
No, I didn't, to tell you the truth, um, Debbie, I didn't even know that we had. When you said that just then, I looked at you like rabbit. Because I didn't even know that we had, that we, we should, all due respect, we should have knew about this yesterday.
That's right.
Yeah, no, it was an emergency.
What is the alternative? People need to get paid, we have to pay these.
The alternative is to let us know ahead of time. You know that your money is due whatever day. Don't wait till that day, hoping that I'm gonna get some money. Your backup plan should be that. What you should do is bring it to the people, the ones that are in charge or you're the board. Let them know that unless we get some money by this date, we have to use an alternative means. And if we have to use an alternative means, do you have a problem with us taking from this fund? That's how.
That's been discussed before.
That's, that's how you do that. That's called transparency. But to do that, and yes, we're supposed to pay payroll, but you still should at least let your board know what's going on, that you don't have, that if the money doesn't come in by such and such a day, that we would have to use Plan B, which means have to take it from another source. But right now, as of right now, we don't have money to pay payroll. And we hoping that you're okay this ahead of time. That's how you do that. Not waiting, go ahead and do it at the last minute. Why is everybody waving hands? That's not a matter of law. Every time you.
Okay.
Okay, dude. My people's hair, so y'all like, it, it, go ahead.
Yes, I'm gonna just say one thing. Yesterday, heard the mayor tell me personally that he got the lights that he's put, that they're putting in through the village through a grant. And he had a certain amount of time to put that in. Now, if he knows about a grant such as that, why doesn't he not know about a whole bunch of grants?
That grant was brought for the village through a company. The company that, as a matter of fact, that put the lights in is the one that went out and got the grant. Basically, they showed, so they're trying to sell their product and they found a way for you, for you to pay. Basically, what we were paying anyways for our lights, they provided that service. They didn't go out and do anything. They have the lights, they have the equipment, they wanted to sell it to the village and they showed you a way that they didn't have to, that you didn't have to pay for it through this grant. They brought that. We didn't, you know, it was, it was that, that's how we got the lights.
Okay, though, but why do they have to have somebody tell them that?
No, no, they brought this to us.
Okay, I understand that, but grants, there are grants out there.
Yes, there are.
Tons of them.
But you have, but you have to know where, so just like when you go to college.
Right.
If you have certain, there's certain grants, but you have to know where, so that's why you get what you pay for, and like. If you're gonna pay somebody, then yeah.
We had, I have a company I worked for, there was an individual in nothing but grants.
Okay.
That's all that person did.
And believe me, there's people out there right now that are grant writers.
Yes.
Not, not pretend, but they're grant writers, but they work on commission.
Yes. Now, my other question, one more is to Mr. Springs. He tells me and everyone here that we need to shop in the village. Now, I have an issue. I don't have an issue with you guys, but I have an issue with Fairway. I buy English muffins that I pretty much have every morning. They're bay English muffins, they're in their cool section. I go pick them up, I look at the date because it terrifies me what I see after time. Those English muffins were expired since November. This is already February, finally get they gotta be met. You think I'm gonna pick up those three and hope they're not, and I've seen them spoiled. There was mold on some of them. Why are they doing that? Why is the board of health coming after them?
First of all, as you said, you went there and you saw it. Did you tell?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so.
Because that's a, you know why? Because it's a passive routine.
That's why those muffins or whatever were there. Because no one said.
Nobody's gonna pick them up.
No, nobody said it. They, now, now, if somebody does finally make, make that decision and call the health department.
Right.
They will come in, but you have to, you have to, it's not gonna happen by itself.
I'll be honest with you. I shop there selected.
A lot of people do.
I do not pick up a lot of their fruit because it's frozen and it's thawed out and celery is limp. They want a dollar eighty-nine for the celery that looks like a noodle. And you want me, you want me to shop there and hopefully poison my grandkids and myself and my husband? I don't know. I go to Indiana, I go to Costco, I go to Chicago Heights Food For Less and other stores. Why would I shop there? Occasionally, I have to, but I look at everything like a detector. Because it scares the hell out of me there.
Because Burton, just like I've been saying, you talking to me, talk to the manager in the store, or to my store or something like that. If you come to me, I would do something.
But why aren't you, why isn't anybody here in the village checking on these people that we as customers have to do that all the time? Why isn't that a routine thing to do?
That part, as far as policing their food and stuff like that, that's the health department. You with the consumer, make that phone call.
Well, trust me, I will do that. I've done it to Dollar General. I've done it to them, I called the district manager. On their horrible way that they treat people there, as well as leavish stuff in the aisles where you can trip on it. It's been semi taken care of.
Don't talk to the managers and stuff at the store.
No, I've got the district manager.
I went in there and bought, or tried to buy some frozen boxes of spinach. And I reached for it and it ran down my arm.
Oh, yeah.
And thought, I took that directly to the manager, who thanked me for bringing it in and handed me some paper towel and then wiped my arm. And as I turned, my desk kept going away, he put it back in the freezer.
That's him, I know him.
Put it right there.
I know the individual.
I told him, you got a problem with your freezer, it's not freezing, it's defrosting, so, you know, all this moved his thought. And he put it right back in there.
He didn't talk to me for a long time.
Isn't Fairman's assistant supposed to be writing grants for us? Fairman's assistant, isn't that what his?
Assistant works at Fairman.
So isn't he supposed to write grants?
No, I mean, he does for Fairman's, he's, he's, he works for Fairman LLC. He doesn't work specifically for the village. Fairman hired him to do whatever he needed him to do. He's not a officer or a employee of the village like that. No, he's paid from Fairman's LLC.
Uh, two questions, and being that it's an open meeting, um. I do have to say it's nothing to get, so Derek, you're a board member and please come to your, your meetings for information. Does the board and the back office, doesn't everybody up there know what payroll is? And doesn't everybody know when, no, I, I, I mean this seriously.
Go ahead.
Do we?
Do, does everybody?
Me too. Do we have a separate payroll for office? Then I know it's broken down on.
Payroll comes out of general, general fund.
Okay, but, um, do we have a separate day that the office people are paid as opposed to the punishment?
But it's, it's different every month because every month they get paid a certain base, and therefore it fluctuates. I wouldn't know when payroll is because I, 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 I'm not part of payroll.
No, but you're a board member.
I'm right, but I don't know when payroll is due. No, I don't have that, that, I could probably get that information. But, I mean, I'm not.
But you're telling, you're telling Debbie, you know this is coming up.
No, I.
Aren't you, as a trustee?
No, I said.
Knowing that it's coming up also, or aren't you trying to say, hey, we got money coming up?
That's why you have your finance chairman. You have your finance director.
Which is.
He knows, that's Mohan, Mohan, Mohan knows when payroll is due.
Okay, then Mohan only speaks up every two weeks and all he does is present the bill and say it was paid, sign it? Is what's going on now?
No, I mean, Mohan knows when payroll is due. So he knows how much money we have or don't have in the bank to pay payroll. He knew that last week. Yesterday, he could have made the statement that payroll was due this Friday, which means if payroll was due Friday, the money has to be in by Wednesday.
Yes, Debbie.
Because most people that have, that have direct deposit get there as a day ahead of time. So if that money's not in by Wednesday, it's happened to us once. Now, money's not in by Wednesday, then those people that get direct deposit won't get their direct deposit tomorrow. They're gonna be given a hand check. So that money has to be in by, but if you knew Tuesday that the money's not there, why not bring it up and say, hey, we don't have money for payroll, we got a draw from this fund. What's the plan to this board? Can I get a consensus? Can I get something?
Now, is it a full amount payroll or is it just?
I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how much, I have no idea how much we're short. Is that what you're trying to say? I don't know. I don't know.
Is it like shorting or?
I don't have anything to do with payroll department. My question really was not about payroll. My question was that, what is the alternative when payroll needs to be met not tomorrow? That was my question. I have nothing to do with my finance department.
Well, I'm just trying to put a value.
My question is whether the trustees know that payroll, just like the finance director and the mayor know, the trustees know that payroll needs to be met. Bills need to be paid, light bills need to be paid, all these other bills need to be paid. What is the alternative if we don't have the money?
Yes, I got your question.
That was my question.
Okay.
Okay, and regardless of what it's being used for, money has to come from somewhere.
I understand that, thank you. My other problematic question is, uh, year, year and a half ago, someone, and I have one more comment after this. Someone had hired, and I'm guessing it's the mayor alone, had hired some kind of company to make an ad about the village to bring property owners in. And it was so grossly exaggerated. All they did was show the expensive houses, and I'm sorry. I don't know where you live exactly, I've never been to your house, but there are some very nice houses in the village, but that's not the majority of our homes. That was done, apparently, to try and bring folks to the village. That was ridiculously done, but it was an attempt.
And that was also a free, Miss Clark, just, I don't mean to cut you off. There was no charge for that. That business came promoted, tried to promote the village for us. There was no charge to the village for that.
I'm glad to hear that, I really am.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Good. Um, also, is there no possibility that the colleges, uh, per state, um, the governors, that there could be any young people that can look for grants for the village? Just like when I was on housing, we had a lady named Sharon. Yes, and she found grants. And it was no charge to the village. She worked as, for her schooling, or she worked for her advancement. It's just a suggestion. That's all I can.
Okay, yeah, one more. But as far as that's concerned, yes, there's students out there that are looking for credit that we can go to the colleges and talk to professors and say, hey, you have someone here in your business department. In other words, in the college's business department. But you got to understand, grants, I can actually go out and get you a grant that's a matching grant. We need to be able to afford, they need to go out and get you a million dollar grant.
You need more.
Matching. I got probably a billion dollars to get that grant. You would have that kind of money. So that's what you, that's what you have to think about when you get grants. But there are grants, there's a lot of grants out there, a lot of them. But I like the fact that I'm going to a professional because they already know. Yes, but you get what you pay for. You get what you pay for. You get what you pay. Who, okay.
I have, I have one.
Okay.
One time, I worked for a hundred and nine billion dollar company. And they made, oh, they made over seven hundred and thirty-one million dollar profit last year. This year, they said, hold up, wait a minute, we gotta get rid of some people. We didn't make a billion dollar profit. So if you know what your projections are, there's no such thing as being short in payroll.
Exactly.
That is what a budget is for. So if we can't get the simple concept of add and subtract leaves a remainder, we're in trouble. There is nothing to do. You have to operate within your means. If you got a mortgage payment at three thousand dollars a month, but you spend five thousand dollars on your luxury cars, you gotta get out. Those people are coming for their houses. So I don't understand how, uh, six, how much you said this, this bill generates a year? How much? Six million dollars. And you can't figure out that you have infrastructure that you have to upkeep? You have employees that you have to upkeep? How in the hell do you get short in payroll? If I was an employee, I'd be mad as hell. You didn't figure this out before I got here? You got me coming out here every day and I'm wishing every Friday I'm gonna get paid. That does not make sense to me, and you all as trustees allowing this person to do that. I understand the concept of four is greater than three, but you all should be screaming to the high heavens that this is not right. So I don't accept that, oh, he's got four, he is three to three and he breaks the top. It's something wrong personally when people cannot add and subtract and know that they don't have any money left. It should not be a damn surprise every week, a week, how are we gonna make payroll? What the hell is that? You got too many employees, then you gotta cut back. If you don't have enough money. Uh, too many people left the village, got their for sale signs or abandonment up there, then you gotta cut back. You steadily constantly going and saying that we're gonna knock down houses, uh, we got three hundred, uh, three hundred and some odd people that, that, uh, renovating homes, where's the income and the revenue to support that? Where's the tax money to support that? It's not what you have, it's what you can prove, and they can't prove none of it. Sorry. I invested in this town and I lost my shirt. I am pissed off to the high heavens. And it's about time that you talk to all five village trustees, tell them if they shift together. I'm sorry, it's not, take it, but it's time for you all, you had forty years into this and you still can't get it right. Okay? What business have you brought into this village? It's not your job. Those that put on the big boy pants and sit in that front seat, that's who is supposed to bring the businesses in here. If there was a trustee that's supposed to send, to bring the business in here, then give them that job to bring it in here and leave those trustees alone. You're trying to micro manage, you can't even spend, you can't even subtract dollars.
Exactly.
And cents. And know that you don't even have payroll from one day to the next day. It's a surprise to you every day and week that we don't have money to pay our people.
Yeah, where is the money?
Where is the money? That's the only thing there is, there is nothing else. And don't, don't hang your head. Because I tell you this every night, don't hang your head. You wanna be in this mess and you should be hiring people every Tuesday? This is serious, Debbie. This is my money, this is what I work my life for. I chose to come to this ragged ass town, and now that I'm here, I want it better.
Was it ready?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right? So people that have never had nothing in their life, never will be nothing in their life, and they're telling you what you can and cannot have, I'm fed up. So I don't know about the rest of the citizens here, but I am fed up with it.
Me too.
And I know how much is two plus two. So why would you hire the police chief, number one? Number two, why is a lawyer here anyway? I don't remember him being here years ago. And he's not allowed to answer questions anyway unless the mayor says he can. So what is he here for? Why are we paying him?
Like I said before, you know, I think it should be gone after the first hour, after the public comment.
He shouldn't even be here, he's not answering questions. Mayor won't let him answer.
Sometimes you have to have him, just in case something is legal, that somebody attempts to answer a question, you can say, you know, the lawyer's there to make sure that you don't say certain things because you can't be held allowed. But, you know.
Well, if he didn't sit down about like eight o'clock in the morning.
Sorry. Yeah, you can put him on, yeah, that has happened where you can call him up, absolutely.
Could I say?
I see people leaving, so. Judy has one more thing to say, I think we're wrapping up at this point.
All right, go Judy.
You know, I, I think Debbie is right in, in how she's trying to say that, what to do. I think we don't have the money. So, other than switching from here to payroll, how do you meet these bills?
Your plan.
Right.
But then again, we go back to what somebody else said about the police chief and what have you. If you don't work within your means, you can't possibly continue to do what this village is doing. When you can't set your own personal feelings aside and work with what you have, you shouldn't be our leader.
You're right, you got that right.
He was asked.
I'm back here for me.
To swallow your pride and put somebody in a position until you could meet what we want. And he couldn't do that. He had to have the administrator, public safety officer, and the police chief. We had a police chief that already, or a deputy chief that was already getting the benefits and, okay, all they had to do was add a little extra to make her temporary chief, acting chief, whatever they wanna call her, until you could see daylight and get what you want. It was absolutely not. His personal feelings came first. That's why we're at, where we're at today, spending that money before looking back, hey, Friday's payday and we don't have the money. None of that came out yesterday while the auditors were there. It absolutely should've been brought out. And I think maybe we should start asking the question, do we have the money to pay the payroll next?
That makes sense.
Why doesn't the finance director bring that up?
Finance, we'll see yesterday, I don't know, find that out, cause I don't understand. But I, but I just wanna say this, and, um, um, it was tonight, I think it was spirited, but powers be don't want this to happen. They don't want us to meet in here because, I don't know, we're nasty or got somebody running up and down the aisles or whatever the case may be. But for, and this is something that I feel strongly about, I think these meetings are informative. You get a chance to speak, you get a chance to, um, say what you have to say, even though my wife is, um, kinda in a different direction.
No, she hit it right up.
But she, but she had a chance to speak her mind, cause she does work each and every day, and she pays exorbitant amounts, we do pay a lot of taxes. I just don't say anything, but we do. So, and each and every person here pays taxes. So, you should have a chance, but to limit and to shut this room down to us, I think it's a travesty. And I think that there's something wrong because, and I'm glad this is on tape or whatever, I think there's something wrong when you try to quiet the residents that come out here for a reason. You guys took your time to come out here, to be involved, to speak your mind, to, to say what you have to say in an environment where you don't have to have the police, you don't have to have somebody to escort you out, you don't have to get, you know, talk, act. You get a chance to say what you wanna say, um, and speak your mind. There's nothing wrong with that, that's what government is about. It gives you that choice. Then this is not a dictatorship, even though it's trying to be around like one. It shouldn't be locked up the doors, it shouldn't be trying to augment people from coming out using their first amendment right to speak how they want. Now, yes, we're gonna keep the belligerent now, so we don't want people to be belligerent, but outside it is. This is what you pay your ta, you pay taxes. If you don't want to hear what a resident got to do, don't run for office. Don't be an elected official, sit in that audience, unless somebody else do it. So, you gotta take criticism, like I said at the beginning, you have to take criticism, just like anything else. And you're supposed to learn from criticism. And I'm hoping that we do that. I'm gonna continue to fight that we can, that, so we can have these meetings, so you can come out and speak. And, you know, I don't care if people try to say that they're gonna make it, this is not political. This is opinionated and constructive criticism. But that said, I like to say goodnight to everybody, thank you guys for coming out. Next week, next Monday will be the same. Um, Thursday, Wednesday of March, seven o'clock, bring your neighbors out. Let them know, and also like to thank the proprietor's for pop out. I mean, they done, they done wondered what you thinking, guys. And for them to be treated a certain way is a travesty.
Yes, it is.
Those are some of the things that we need to do, and quit worrying about how many meetings that we're having, who's saying what to where, you know. Patronize, support your businesses, and quit coming up there expecting free food.